Call to order and roll call. Chair Goss?
Here.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Here.
Commissioner Swab?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Waters?
Here.
Commissioner Noble? Vice Chair Blair is excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. All right, this is the City of Kingman meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. The first thing we need to do is the approval of minutes. These are the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission from July 11th, 2023. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any other conversation? No? I see none. All right. Then next we move to consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any comments?
Yes, we do have one that wishes to address the commission.
But that's for the agenda item, right?
Oh, yes.
Perfect. Okay, so we don't have any public comments then?
Yes.
I've never been here before, folks, so this is, this is new, so...
Okay, so yes, if he wishes to address.
Sure, so these are, this is the public comment section for things that are not on the agenda. If you're trying to address us about something that we're talking about on the agenda tonight, then that comes later. Yep, no problem. All right, then if we have no public comments, let's move to our first order of new business. Do we have a report from staff?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you actually would want to read the thing on there, that would be great.
All right, this is the public hearing preliminary plat case SB 20-0007. It is a request for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for Canyon Palms, tract 6052. The proposed subdivision includes eighty-nine residential lots and two parcels dedicated for storm water control located on nineteen point zero eight acres.
Okay, good evening, Chair and members of the commission. As stated before, this is the presentation for the preliminary subdivision plat SB 20-007 Canyon Palms tract 6052. So the applicant for this is Civil Works Engineering LLC. The property owner is...
I'm sorry, Sean, it doesn't look like it's showing up on the screen.
Okay, thank you. Edward, what am I doing wrong? Who didn't turn them on? Hold on just a second. I was worried about the people online. We'll let those warm up here right quick. Okay, so now that looks like everything else good. Hope so. All right, so this is a request for approval of a proposed preliminary subdivision plat for eighty-nine residential lots and a nineteen point zero eight acres. The lots are intended to be used for, but are not limited to be used for duplex development. The property is currently zoned as R4 Residential, which is for multifamily, high-density. The subject property is located six hundred feet south of Airway and in between Rutherford Street and Swing Street. So this has all been provided to you in your packets. This is the actual preliminary plat that we're looking at today. This is the overall view of where the site is for the subdivision to be built. It's kind of, this is the actual zoning map showing you what the different zoning areas are around this particular site. This is a different view, kind of laying out what is actually in those zones and being used in those zones. So you see there's RV park on one side, commercial on the other. A lot of the medium to higher density development is occurring in here. The drainage is general direction is towards the north. Some of the city infrastructure and things that are there and in place that will be being hooked into for this subdivision. And it's just kind of showing the actual layout of the subdivision within the subject site. Pictures of where it's at. If you're looking to the northeast off of Rutherford Street, this is the same picture. Essentially, the, obviously this was sent out to all the departments. The engineering department's comments are also incorporated in the staff report. We've also incorporated those into some of the staff recommendations later on in the presentation. The fire department's comment is basically based upon the average spacing of the fire hydrants needs to be five hundred feet, which is our normal protocols. And then the appears that there's adequate ingress and egress for fire apparatus. There's no objections to the preliminary plant from the building official in Mohaway County Flood Control District says that they don't have any comments at this time. Frontier Communications just basically stated that they are able to serve the proposed subdivision. That'll, that'll take place with the with the developer, if they choose to do so, or if they, any other building and things, they'll have to contact Blue State to make sure that they're not going to interrupt any of that, any of that infrastructure that's there. So the proposed preliminary plat is proposed to be done in four phases. So the first phase contains eight lots and one parcel. Just a little information for you guys, the difference between a lot and a parcel is essentially a parcel usually is a lot bigger, and most times those parcels are dedicated to the city throughout the process because there's some type of infrastructure or drainage or something like that that occurs. And then, as you can see, the, the rest of the phases are laid out here on how the subdivision is intended to be built. The lot sizes range from six thousand sixteen square feet all the way up to eight thousand four hundred ninety-six square feet. They vary in size throughout the subdivision. There's two proposed parcels that are to be dedicated to the city for storm water detention. That's to help with some of the flooding and any of the water that would be passing across, that currently is passing across the subdivision, so all that is accounted for. So they have initially intended to develop their lots with at least duplex residence, can be triplex. And also, they can develop these lots as single-family homes, right? So there's quite a big array of what can actually occur within the subdivision based upon the zoning. The interior streets, they'll be improved with street pavement, curb gutter and sidewalks, which is all the normal requirements. There's a one-foot VNA proposed along the Rutherford Street and Swing Street to disallow direct vehicle access to those streets from the abutting lots. That basically means that those, those lots back up towards the, those other streets, right? And it would not allow them to be able to have, say, an RV gate or something like that on the rear side of that property because they wouldn't be able to meet the site visibility triangle requirements for entering a street and, and other things like that. The exterior streets also require some improvements. And the preliminary drainage study was submitted which basically said that the requirement of the two parcels be used for the stormwater detention ponds, so... So the, here are the proposed improvements that are going to be required outside of the actual subdivision itself. And then the planning department or planning staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with some conditions. Basically, that the subdivision improvements must occur within what our adopted codes and ordinances are. There's two lots that are currently on the preliminary plat that we're still working to try and get some things figured out with. However, we don't want the process to stop. We want to keep moving it forward, so we're working with the, with the applicant to try and, and make that happen. But at any rate, there are two lots within the subdivision that don't meet the minimum lot size requirements as far as dimensions. They supersede and go beyond what the required square footage is. However, the lot dimension length of a hundred foot isn't met. However, we, we have some pretty good ideas and we should be able to move forward with that. But we, we do have to put that as a condition so that we, so that we are in compliance with the R4 zoning requirements. The Rutherford Street, it's a city-maintained roadway. It's classified as a collector's street and has a sixty-foot right-of-way. The developer shall improve Rutherford Street along the site frontage with half-streets plus eight feet past the, the center line there and with the asphalt tapering to match whatever that improved or unimproved area is. Swing Street is not a city-maintained roadway at this time and is classified as a collector's street. So the developer shall improve Swing Street along the site's frontage and up to Airway Avenue with half-street improvements plus eight feet, which that is our normal protocol when it, when it comes to that. The interior subdivision streets essentially will be developed with pavement, rolled curbs, gutter and five-foot sidewalk. Again, these, that, that portion of this is, is standard. And essentially, working with them, the city engineer who has agreed to allow them to develop the streets with only a fifty-two-foot right-of-way as opposed to what our current regulations are of a fifty-four-foot. That's to help them to be able to achieve their hundred-foot lot lengths. So again, we're, we're trying to, trying to move forward and, and really get, get this, these things moving forward here, so... The, as I stated before, the preliminary drainage study basically says that the two drainage parcels, parcel A and B that are proposed, they would both need to be dedicated to the city and they must be constructed as detention basins by the developer as part of the first phase. So basically, that means that they, they have to have the drainage in place with Phase One for the entire subdivision before Phase One of, of the subdivision can be complete, so... So the adjacent, adjacent to the proposed parcel B is essentially a twenty-foot right-of-way. That is not incorporated to any of the lots or parcels. So they'll need to incorporate that small section of easement within, within those, those areas within either the lot or the parcel. That's, that's something that we have to do and put in here for legal purposes. I would, I would imagine as we move forward in the process and everything else with some of the changes that they're making with the infrastructure, the majority of that easement could most likely be abandoned later on in the process, so... That's just something that, again, we're, we're trying to move things forward. So the sewer manholes and fire hydrant spacing shall meet the adopted design standards at the time of the final plat submittal, so... Again, here we are, and those two lots that we were talking about that don't quite meet the hundred-foot length or up in the top-left corner, just adjacent to the city, the parcel that's to be dedicated to the city. Again, we're working with the engineer of record to get that, get that squared away to where everything's in compliance. And I will entertain any questions.
Thank you, Sean. Does anybody have questions for staff?
Yeah, Sean, I noticed that there was a vehicle non-access easement there.
Yes.
And in that map, could you just explain that a little bit? I didn't quite understand about...
So the, you're talking about the one on the Rutherford Street side, correct?
Yeah, it was a one-foot.
Okay, so, so if you see, see the lots that are abutting, basically that are between, I believe that's, what is that, Pearl Street there? Anyway, the street in front of and behind on Rutherford? Right?
Got it, okay.
So Rutherford is the street on the left, right? And that no-vehicle, vehicle access basically states that if it, it does not allow for one of these residents to have vehicle access from their property onto that roadway.
Got it, because they're butt right up against it.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Understood.
I have a question.
Okay.
Did staff negotiate with the developers in regards to adding parks? Or using the retention ponds as potential parks for the children in this, children and families in this new development?
So that, that is, that's not something that, that takes place at this level. That's something that takes place at the general plan level. Right? So when we, when we do the general plan and we write the general plan, if based upon the size, density and things like that, the, the city actually dedicates things to have to be able to occur, right? So when the general plan is adopted, it basically says that, okay, if and when this particular area is developed, right? You have to dedicate a certain amount of your land within your subdivision to be a park or something like that, right? And part, part of the reasons on why that occurs is most times, what happens is, is when a park is built, right? The developer builds the park, right? They, they build it and everything else. And then at that point, that park or those types of lands are then dedicated over to the city. And basically, what that comes down to for us is that doesn't allow us to have any source of managing how much we have to maintain and take care of as far as the parks are concerned.
So are you saying that that would happen at the next step?
No, I'm, I'm saying it wouldn't, it will not happen in this process at all. This happens at a completely different, it's a completely different process. So if we talk, if we talk about like parks in the vicinity, right? So a lot of times, how, how we do that as a city is we look at, okay, so for this amount of density and this amount of population, we need this certain amount of park space within this certain amount of distance, right? And so that's taken into consideration within the general plan to where that, at that stage, if, if somebody decides to buy that land that the city has said, okay, we have to have a park here, right? Then they have to, however they develop their subdivision, they have to provide that in their plan, right? So it, it's, it's not something that's, and the, and the city has already gone in and said, based upon what the zoning is, what the densities of people are, the amount of park space that's within that vicinity, how to access that and everything else. It, it, the city has said, okay, we don't, we, not that we don't want it because we always want it, right? And then also, there's nothing that says that if the developer wants to put that in and keep that and pay for it and maintain it and water it and do all those things, they absolutely can do that if that's within what their plan is to do. As far as the city, we're not going to require them to do that.
Okay, so you're saying that according to the city, the, there's not enough development in that area to require a park?
There's a park literally right down the road. Right? So, so that's, and like I said, those are the things that are taken into consideration at the, at the, at the large-scale level. So as we move through on the development of the general plan, right? That is something that definitely is, is in, taken into consideration. So as far as like the development that is to occur on the east side, there where like the interchanges are and everything else, based upon the densities and the lands that's there and the amount of people that are going to be there and the distances from those parks and things like that, that's all currently in the plan, which we're looking into as well to, as we increase out into those areas, make those things as requirements as well.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I've got several questions, actually. You keep saying you want to, you want to get the project moving along.
Correct.
When is, when are they anticipating starting the project, actually?
So that's not a question for me to answer. That, that could be a question that potentially the applicant can answer. They'll have opportunity to speak here shortly. But this is just the first step for us, right? So as far as this, this is just preliminary. So this is basically stating, hey, we want to do this. We've put the thought and we, as a city, have reviewed it and they're, they're, they know they need to put in all the infrastructure and everything else. But we still have a few things that we need to fine-tune before we actually build it, right? So there's, the next step after this is to those conditions that are, that are in there, those eight conditions, right? That they're going to have to have on their plan, that they're going to comply with those conditions before we can move to the next step of going to the final plat. And at that point, once the final plat is, once the final plat is approved, there, there's a couple options for the developer when it comes to that. They can, at their own risk, they can do all development, right? And, and build everything, and then the city comes in and says, okay, yes, you've complied with all these things. Or they, they, they can do some type of assurance agreement, basically says that, hey, if we don't wind up building this or something like that, there'll be compensation involved, right? So, so there's, there's, there's multiple different steps and things that can occur within this process. So as far as being able to say, when are they planning to start this? I would imagine as soon as they can, right? However, I can't, I can't answer that.
I think maybe the rest of my questions that I had would be for, for, for them.
Okay.
So I'll just wait.
Okey-dokey.
I have another question.
Okey-dokey.
The streets, so Swing Street is unpaved.
Correct.
And Rutherford needs improvements. Is that right? Did I, did I remember that right? Okay, so, and I, I think that I remember reading that the developers would only pave the section that that includes their parcel and property. Is that correct?
So yes and no. So in, in this case, as, as was presented, on the Rutherford Street side, yes. On the Swing Street side, no. It, it's, it's, it's a little bit, the rules are a little bit different. So they'll be, they'll be developing what's required, which in this case is going to go a little bit beyond the, the lot lines.
Does it go?
So it will be from...
To Beverly?
No, it will be from where they're at here, where their subdivision is to Airway, north to Airway.
Okay.
And part, part of that reason is, is there's other develop, del, development and stuff that's going on in there?
Yeah.
That, that the city has, has entered into agreements with other developers and things for... So, so as part of this subdivision, they'll have to do half-street plus eight feet, right? So half of whatever that street is plus the eight feet, right? And then in the, on the other side of the road, right? There is development that's occurring there. The city has a process to where if, in, in the case of what's being developed over there, doesn't really affect Swing Street, however, they're still required to do those, the, the building of the roads and things like that there. That particular developer has opted to not build that, but give the city money that's set aside for when the process does happen, the city will have the money to develop that in, for them. Yeah.
Okay, so, so there's the potential that that road could all be paved at the same time. Is that...
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and, and I guess what I'm trying to understand is it seems like one of the problems that we've run into in Kingman is paving the roads at different times and and the problems that that has created, so I'm just wondering, wondering if there are if there are ways that staff has tried to to address that with the builders, with the developers.
There, there has, but basically what this, what this comes down to is areas of responsibility, right? If, if we, we it, it's, it's not, it's not right of us to go to a developer and say, hey, you have to develop this entire road even though you're only on this side of it, and then this person that comes in over here and develops on the other side of the street, what, what are they going to pay for, right? So this is a, this is a way of the city basically saying, okay, hey, look, we will, we will allow you to build and develop. However, you need to do your portion of this, right? And so that, that's kind of, kind of the issue that we have, right? And when you have different developers that are across the street from each other, they don't always develop the, the property at the same time. And if that was, if that was a condition that we could put in there, it would be great, but unfortunately, we just can't do that.
Well, what about? And I, I'm learning here, so I appreciate your patience. What about the possibility of what's happening on Swing Street where they're giving you the money so that that has the potential to all be paved at the same time?
So that's only, that's only in lieu of the only reason this has come to, come about on Swing Street is because on the other side of Swing Street from the subdivision, they are in the process of developing that, right? So in that process, it's what's required them to have to put that money up or put in the half plus eight. So, so it, it's, it's based upon when the developer is going to develop the land, right? We, we could go to the landowner on the other side of Rutherford and say, oh, hey, you want to give us some money, right? But their answer is going to be, well, no, right? Because it's, there's no benefit to them to put that money up front now because they don't know if they're going to develop it, if they're going to sell it, or what they're going to do with that property.
Yeah, I understand that. It just comes at a cost to the roads and to the general public when we're, when we're doing the roads piecemeal like that, it seems.
Yes, yes and no, but you have to realize that as we progress forward with our roads, obviously, roads are, are a big issue. obviously, roads are, are a big issue. Um, the city does have a plan, and when the roads are maintained the way they're supposed to be maintained, that difference in asphalt's being laid and everything else, um, i- it's, it's not, it's not gonna be too much of a difference. Because when we go to maintain that road, we're gonna maintain the entire road. We're not gonna say, okay, we're only gonna do this half because it's due and this half because we still have another year or two on it, right? So, so there's, there's a lot of things that play, play into this. As far as, you know, the road conditions and things like that, um, and, and it's, like I said, it's one of those things, we have a plan and we're moving forward with that plan. I'm, I'm sure you've, you've seen some areas of town to where we're, we're actually doing some of the maintenance, right? We're, we're doing as much maintenance as we can now. Some of that mainst- maintenance is gonna actually be, um, milling up some of, some portions of the roads and relaying different asphalt and, and things like that, so.
Yeah, it's a complex issue. I, I, I gather that I don't understand a lot of it, but I appreciate you taking the time to explain that to me.
Absolutely.
I've got another question.
Absolutely.
Um, is phase one goes in, they'll be required to have a, um, ingress and egress point?
That is, that is a part of phase one, yes.
On Rutherford Street, right?
That, that's gonna be on the far south side of, of that phase.
Okay.
Right, so that'll, that'll be their, um, phase one entrance will be off of Rutherford Street, right? And then as they move forward in the different phases, um, a, a lot of times what they'll do is they'll do a part of this phase over here, right? As far as infrastructure, streets, and things like that to have access to the entire subdivision.
Are we requiring the second entrance to be, um, available as soon as the, the project starts? The, the Swing Street side for, for fire protection?
Um, that, that would be a question for, for the engineer. So, if we were to go back here, um, so if we, if we look at, at what the, what the phases are, right? So, we have phase one, right? You'll have fire apparatus access off of Rutherford Street, right? And then when phase two is built, right? If you look at phase two, if you look at the roadways on phase two, right? That will extend that access and comply with all of what the fire code requirements are as far as what turnarounds are and things like that. So, the code does not require them to have two access points. They can have one access point, however, they have to provide a safe space for fire apparatus to do a full turnaround with the size of what it is. And so, they will be providing that with phase one.
All right.
Right, and then when phase two comes into play, they'll be connecting the street along the bottom of the subdivision. That'll go all the way around, and that will have to be completed before they can build houses in that phase.
Okay.
Do we have any more questions for Sean? No? Okay, thank you.
You betcha.
All right, I'm gonna move us into public comment. Um, first off, let me have Alex come up.
But Alan's not gonna talk about this one.
Alan, oh, you're not gonna talk about this one?
No, I wanna talk about the, um, the, 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 I think it's the right city council meeting. Right? The plot, the plot of land off of Hollow pine? Are we not talking about that tonight?
No.
Honestly, because
No.
there is a public notice.
That, that was canceled. Yep, and we, we, we sent out, we, we did send out notification that that was canceled because we, we were not able to, um, the, the news, the newspaper did not, um...
You got, the cancellation?
It was canceled and rescheduled for today.
Yeah, so it is today.
Yeah.
No, it was, it was canceled. It, it is not occurring today.
That sounds frustrating.
When, how, how does one know about that?
So, so, if, if you don't, if you don't mind, we need to proceed with this agenda item. I will be, I'll, I'll be happy to, um, meet with you, um...
Well, do you have any information? I would like you to call me, please.
Absolutely.
Because there is a notice. I live.
I, I understand that.
From that place. We got nothing. But, here's my senior. And Jennifer, I like the parks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any public comment on the subdivision issue? No? Okay, I see none on that, so I'm gonna close public comment and open it up to a commission discussion. Okay, well, we have far less people here with a problem with this one, so...
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I, I know that, um, Commissioner Sarkisian did have some questions for the applicant, and the applicant is present, so I don't know if you, if you want to do that first.
Do you want me to call him up for some questions?
That'd be fine.
Okay, perfect. Um, do you wanna come up and approach the podium? And we've got some questions for you, Jed.
Hello?
Hi.
Uh, Jed Noble, I'm the applicant for this project.
I was just curious, uh, Jed, if there was gonna be a privacy wall built around that project? Is there gonna be been any discussion or anything about that?
I would imagine it's gonna be a standard six-foot block wall around the perimeter.
Okay. Um, and then, I'm not sure if we answered this question or not. I wanted to know, um, how soon the east entrance on Swing Street was gonna be put in?
Uh, so that's just a, a phasing question.
To the project.
Yeah, um, so currently, we have most of the design done for phase one and phase two, ready to submit to the city. Um, so that's just, that's just a, a phasing. It depends on the economy and, you know, how these sell and that kinda thing. Um, but as far as the, uh, if you're concerned about the fire apparatus in phase one and phase two, when, um, when those are designed, we have to put in, it's kinda like a cul-de-sac, it's like an A-B.
Okay.
Turnaround for the fire apparatus.
I guess my last question was, um, what is the tentative projection for complete build-out on the project?
As far as the timeline goes?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure, uh, but we're, as soon as we get this approved, we're ready to submit the improvement plans to the city really soon.
I mean, is there, is there, are we maybe thinking that it's gonna take two years to complete all this? Or is it a five-year project?
That'd be a good timeline, two years from start, from now to, to finish.
Um, the way I understand this, the, 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 where Rutherford, Beverly, um, there's a gap of Rutherford that is totally unpaved in there. Um, as far as this development goes, the street, um, that the developer, the, the part of the street that the developer is gonna take care of is of the approximate boundary line on the west side.
Basically, the, the property frontage, yeah.
And, and then it will terminate it at the end of the, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, does...
So, when those other, when those other parcels, uh, that you're mentioning, uh, where Rutherford isn't improved, when those, uh, parcels are improved, uh, those landowners will have to improve Rutherford with pavement at that time.
Okay, um, I've got fire on my mind tonight. And I was just wondering, yes, is that gonna be a problem for the fire department to get over, get up that way, uh, from the Beverly?
The fire department wasn't involved in, uh, this review process, and their comments have been addressed. So, uh, additional improvements to Rutherford didn't come up from the fire department.
The, the fire department is satisfied with what has been submitted.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you, Jed.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, will there be, will the developers do landscaping outside of the block wall? On the outside of it?
Like the block wall and, and Rutherford?
Yeah.
I'm sure they're gonna put some, like, landscape rock out there, but landscaping isn't a requirement for this project. Be simple landscaping, kinda like, uh, on Keno or Wallack Ranches, something like that?
Okay. And then are there any pl- uh, plans for amenities in the subdivision?
Single-family homes.
Okay. That's the amenities? Okay. All right, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
Do you have any more questions for Jed?
Uh, yeah, Chair Goss, Commissioner Noble, just, just curious if you have any, I know this is really early, but if you have any, like, elevations that show what the proposed structures would look like on the property? I know just earlier, there were, there could be triplexes on here, duplexes. Sort of like any sort of visual representation of what it might look like at this point?
That'd be a question for the developer. I haven't seen anything.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are we good? Okay, thank you, Jed.
All right. Uh, I'm sorry, Jed.
Sure.
I have one more question I just thought of. Uh, that was the first time I'd heard about a triplex, uh, was...
I don't think triplexes are planned for this project at this time.
Sean mentioned that in his introduction, and...
It's, uh, that was, uh, this project's been going for about three years. That was one of the initial ideas. I don't think triplexes are planned at this time, no.
Okay.
Yes, so essentially, basically, um, it was mentioned because it, it isn't allowed use in the zoning. So, if, if they chose to build triplexes in there, they absolutely could do so.
Okay.
Uh, but, I mean, it, it's, it's sounding like they're not, they're not wanting to.
I just wanted to get clarification on that, that's all.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, do you have any information on the design? No?
Just, just three-bedroom, two-bath, what they're gonna be.
Okay.
Well, I mean, keep in mind, as a city in our zone, you have to sign.
Yep.
Okay, do we have any more questions then?
No.
No.
No? All right. Anybody wanna make a motion or chat about anything? No? Okay, all right, who's gonna make a motion for me?
I'll motion to approve, uh, the preliminary plat SB two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven and all of the recommendations by the city.
I'll second that.
Perfect, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll-call vote? Chair Goss? Approve. Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Swop?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble is abstained, motion approved. Great, thank you. All right, next we move to announcement by commission members. This is limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Um, I'll go first. Um, Commissioner Waters and I just came back from the annual, um, planning conference this last week, and it's definitely something I would recommend going to, um, if you haven't been to one. Um, you learn a lot about what's going on and also extra things you can bring back to different parts of the community. So, I would highly recommend doing that.
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Uh, Chair Goss, I'd like to second what you just said. Um, in particular, there was a, a, a large concern about affordable housing, which these gentlemen are addressing right now with their new subdivision. Big talk on that in the state, along with equity and other things. So, there's a, there's a whole gamut of issues if, if any of these commissioners wanna attend in the future. Highly recommend it.
Great, thank you so much. All right, any more comments? No?
No.
All right, then I motion to adjourn.